Yeah. Weird gets the horn, my friend.
Yeah, I had a lot of these reports. Thank you.
I've read it before.
Oh, all right. Well, I'm so glad that I can be here. I just wanted to make this a bit. It's a brand new. All right, here we go. No, I can't. There's, there's a. Appreciate. Thank you. Are they all done?
Yeah, we have more.
Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting. If you please stand for the pledge and remain standing for the clear.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of the community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that may affect the residents of North Tonawanda, and continue to remind us that all we do to you today and all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of the truth of the greater glory of you. And for the service of humanity, we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order on April 3, 2018, at 6:34 PM. Can I have roll call, please?
President Zizelka.
Here.
Alderman Brown.
Here.
Alderman Berube.
Here.
Alderman Pequeiro.
Here.
And Alderman Tavert.
Here.
Also present with us today, we have Mayor Arthur Pappas and City Attorney Luke Brown.
All right, at this point, the mayor for his opening comments is going to present a proclamation on behalf of the council and the mayor. So we'll step forward for that. Do you want to call anybody up for that?
We could have representative from the volunteer fire. Not too long ago, we recognized some volunteers that work with the auxiliary police. And the volunteers, of course, are just that, they're volunteers who put in numerous hours throughout the year, day and night, to help our community and to work along with our paid police, paid fire. And we've been in the process of recognizing some of these volunteers. Last time, it was the auxiliary police. Tonight, it happens to be some representatives from the volunteer fire companies, which do so much for our community, helping our paid firemen. And they are there for traffic safety and helping to fight fires. And they, along with our paid personnel, put their lives on the line, too, and do so much for the safety of our residents. And when accidents happen on the road also, non-residents are taken care of also. And the volunteers are a large part of this, along with our professional paid firemen. So tonight, that's who we're recognizing, and I'd just like to present this proclamation. Whereas the six North Tonawanda firefighter volunteer companies have served North Tonawanda and the surrounding communities for over 125 years. Long time. 125 years, you know you're over a century. That's pretty good.
Tell me that a little bit.
I didn't know. Whereas the North Tonawanda firefighter volunteers selflessly, selflessly spend their own time and transportation attending New York State mandated firefighter trainings and also attending city training drills. And whereas the North Tonawanda firefighter volunteers are on call 24/7 to respond to motor vehicle accidents, fires, and natural disasters. And whereas the North Tonawanda firefighter volunteers have grown and expanded over many years, having had its members, many prominent citizens, men and women, who are carrying out important roles in the fire company and the community, or who in the past used the volunteer initiative to serve the community, taking pride in all they have achieved. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Arthur G. Pappas, Mayor of North Tonawanda, and the common council, do hereby proclaim that April is recognized as Volunteer Firefighter Month in the city of North Tonawanda. In witness hereof, I have set my hand and pause to be a fit, to fix the city, the seal of our city, on this third day of April in the year 2018. And it's signed by all the council members. And we present this to you. Thank you for your service. As we do all our volunteers, we appreciate what you do, and I'm sure the community does, too. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this point, we're going to, if anybody who needs to speak on any of the agenda items for tonight, and the agenda items only, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sonia Dusa.
Good evening.
And I reside at 123 Miller Street, North Tonawanda. I, too, would like to congratulate the volunteer firemen. Many times over the years, I've seen them, there's been an accident, what have you, and they're out there, and I don't think they have a salary correct.
No.
They are really to be applauded. Service, I think it's wonderful. Thank you, then. And thanks for making that proclamation, Mayor Pappas. Very needed, important. Regarding the agenda. Number one, communication from Scott Kandrowski regarding resignation from the Planning Commission and Board of Assessment Review. When I have been at the planning commissions, which is not every month, but when I read the minutes, I notice he's absent. And I would respectfully ask to know, how many times since he was appointed, has he been in attendance? And I would ask, and I know it's not uncommon, when a planning commission or a zoning board person misses two consecutive meetings, they should be removed. That's a very important position. On Roman number 1.1, mayor appointment of Robert Fritsch to the planning commission, was he ever on the waterfront commission, the boat docks?
I don't believe so. I think he's new on any of the commissions. I'm not positive, but I don't think so.
You know, I've said this several times, so many times over the decades, it's retreads. I think we ought to encourage people to serve government and step up and, I'd like to see some new faces.
I believe he's new. When I spoke to him at length, and he, it didn't sound like he had ever been a part of the city government before. So he is new, and he has a pretty good background in this area, so.
If you don't, I'd like to know, is he, does he have an area in planning or some form of engineering?
Yes, he does.
What, what's the area?
He's got, he's got some work in construction, and as I understand it, some planning, and just, he's got an all-around thing for this, this area.
It's good to hear. I would also ask, Mayor, when this came, I forget the date of that letter, but when this opened up, did the municipality put the word out that there's an opening, and if anybody's interested, please send your resume in? Has that happened?
Not really. What we go on, or what I've gone on with some of these appointments, is people that have come in and either have dropped a resume or just expressed an interest.
Before an opening came up.
Right. And so I have, I have a list of a few people that have come in and actually asked to be a part of one of the commissions or boards or whatever. And so then, when the time comes and there's an opening, I will call a few of them and see if they're still interested, and interview them, and go from there.
Good to know that. And I would then ask to put the word out, the media, that this is something that's happening, and it's okay, and just let people know that if you're interested in any of these different committees, you're welcome to apply.
Sure, we can do that. That's not a problem.
Wonderful. Also, on the payment of abstract of claims, I've asked this several times already, and I think not too long ago, I would like to see what the claims are for compensation. Several years ago, one of the Brentwood people who had litigation, he would always find that on the desk. And you didn't have a bunch, but I would be interested in seeing those abstract of claims that are made to the city. So I would respectfully ask next time, next month, that that be provided to citizens. After all, it's the citizens, the taxpayers, who are paying that bill, and they're also paying the insurance company that reverses the city for that claim. Also, on communication from others, Image Community Gardens, permission to enter into a lease agreement for a community garden on city-owned property located at 228 Summer Street. Is that where the playground used to be?
Yes.
You know, I think to have a garden is really a luxury. Years ago, decades ago, our neighbor was Hungarian. She and her husband had the best corn, string beans, garlic. It was wonderful. And I like, I would honestly like to be able to have my own little garden. I don't have time for that, but I think it's wonderful. And a community garden should be in the appropriate place. And honestly, it's not like we're in the outskirts or an area that's very large. It's, it's not compatible with the homes in, in the neighborhood. So I am really opposing a community garden in a residential area. I think it's nice to have it, but we have to have it in the appropriate place. And I would also mention.
Sonia, can I interrupt you for a second? And I'll, and I'll give you your time back.
Thank you.
For, for this. So Lori, if you could, you know, stop the clock. You know, you've been a big roadblock to our community garden initiative from the very beginning. Have you actually gone out to Lockport and seen what those community gardens in Lockport have done for those communities and those residents that are involved in that project?
That evening after the workshop, I went on the website, and I can't recall the, the communities, and it was local, maybe it was also Lockport, but I saw what was happening, what, what the pictures were in, in the comments. And it jived with what I was interpreting and knew to be and the reason I was opposing. I'm, I'm not like I don't, haven't seen it. I have seen it, I know in, east side of Buffalo, they have it, in the Clinton area, Fillmore area. And, you know, that reminds me, that is a low income. In fact, people at that neighborhood just won a lawsuit, they were fighting for eight years, and Senator Schumer helped them finally had that ended. They were abused by what they were living with, and close to them, right in their neighborhood, is one of these community gardens. I think a community garden should be a showcase, and you have it where it belongs.
That's where it belongs, where the people need it most. And I talked to you about this several times, we've had workshops on it, you didn't like the.
Workshops?
Yes. And you did not like the first location, so it's defaulting to the second location. We had an option A and an option B, we're welcome to speak about it. As a matter of fact, somebody is here from the Imagine Gardens now. So after you're done there, he may be able to speak on it.
When I, I.
But I think you need to understand the project. I really do.
And I, and I think it will be a real showcase.
I was there when the fellow made the presentation, and I was stunned. I thought, I can't believe that CSX is going along with this. So I called them, and they said, CSX does not approve or permit community gardens on its property. I, whoa, exactly what I thought. Here, here we are. A community gardens, I think, is wonderful, but it has to be in the appropriate place. So do not try to fool people with this fake news that I do not care for it. I think it's wonderful. And it's good to have, nothing like homemade vegetables, fruits, that's the best. And I will conclude with that. Thank you so much.
I believe Rich is here. Rich, did you want to say something on that, or you want to wait till later? Okay. Anybody else we shouldn't speak on anything on tonight's agenda? In tonight's agenda only, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address. Seeing that there's none, we'll move on and roll the minutes of the meeting.
On approval of the minutes of the regular session, March 20, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Communication's from city officials, number one, Scott Kandrowski regarding the resignation from the planning commission and board of assessment and review.
Like motion we receive and file.
I'll second it. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Number one for the mayor, appointment of Rob, Robert Fritsch to the planning commission.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Number two, mayor appointment of Frank Deveran to the board of assessment and review.
I'll make the motion we receive and file.
I'll second it. A motion in a second, all in favor on this item?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Number one from the clerk treasurer, warrant for the collection of the city taxes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, can I have roll call on this, please?
Alderman Brown?
Yes.
Alderman Berube?
Yes.
Pequeiro?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
And Zizelka?
Aye. Motion is carried.
Number two from the clerk treasurer, permission for National Grid to start a study for the Energy Efficiency Incentive Program.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. We have a motion in a second for permission to National Grid to start a study for the energy efficiency. Can I have roll call on this, please?
Alderman Brown?
Aye.
Berube?
Aye.
Pequeiro?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
And Zizelka?
Aye. Motion carries.
Number one, Nate Counton, payment of the abstract of claims dated April 3, 2018.
Make the motion we pay the abstract.
I'll second it.
On the question, I brought this up earlier. I, I feel that we, we should look at how we, what our procedures are with this. You know, like I said, we get these numbers a few hours before, we're voting on them, you know, something could be missed, more or less, and if we're able to at least push it back a day, and I've had.
We've done that.
Conversation, okay, great. And I've had a similar conversation with different individuals in different departments and mixed opinions because of this and that. But I, I think we should have that discussion, especially with some of the items, just more detailed to them also. I've seen firsthand the procedures of how it goes, and I think things could be missed. So for us to sign off on them, it might be a smart idea. So it's just something we should think about, maybe something we talked to the accountant about.
I was going to say, we would have to talk to you, Amanda.
Yeah.
About this.
That's something moving forward.
Discussion will, we would have.
Yeah. Something moving forward we can do, but is there an objection to the abstract of strength for the abstract of claims tonight?
No.
Okay, so that's what the motion is on the floor. We have a motion in a second to pay the abstracts. Can I have roll call, please?
Alderman Brown?
Aye.
Berube?
Aye.
Pequeiro?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
And Zizelka?
Aye. Motion carried.
Number two from Nate Counton, the budgetary transfer to purchase and install a new backup generator for the water filtration and pumping staff.
I make a motion that we do this transfer?
I'll second that. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, definitely need a roll call on this, please?
Alderman Braun?
Aye.
Berby?
Aye.
Peckerro?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
And Zizelka?
Aye, motion carries.
And the traffic safety, regarding their various traffic safety, safety recommendations from their March meeting minutes.
Um, I'll make the motion, I liked the one recommendation about reducing the speed in the middle school area, I think with those new baseball fields, you're gonna see a lot more people there, um, I think it's important to slow down traffic, so.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Uh, regarding the monthly reports for the police department.
Make a motion to receive and file the monthly reports.
I'll make a second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Communications from others, A, Imagine Community Gardens, permission to enter into a lease agreement for a community garden on city-owned property located at 228 Summer Street.
We've, we've had a lot of discussion on the community garden, and we really appreciate the city attorney for actually taking a process that was stopped at and extracted, putting it back on the rails, and getting this moving forward for us, and I really appreciate that. So thanks for, uh, for all you did to, to make sure that we get this garden moving and appropriately approved this evening. So I'm gonna make the motion that we go forward with it as per the agreement.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, let's have a roll call on this, please?
Alderman Braun?
Aye.
Berby?
Aye.
Peckerro?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
And Zizelka?
Aye, motion is carried.
B, Grantwood Coles Company removal of Charles Clark from the fire rolls.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
C, missing and exploited children, permission to conduct the ride for missing children through North Tonawana Friday, May 18th, 2018.
I'll make that motion for permission.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
D, St. Martin Lutheran Church, permission to waive the permit fee for food trucks for their basket raffle on Saturday, April 28th, 2018.
I'd like to make that motion.
And I'm gonna second it, well, you know, just to make sure everybody understands that we're just waiving the fee, but not the inspection or the investigation of those people working at the food table itself, so I'm gonna second that.
That's correct, Bob. Uh, can I have a roll call on this item?
Alderman Braun?
Aye.
Berby?
Aye.
Peckerro?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
And Zizelka?
Aye, motion carried.
E, Confor Plastics, donation of $10,000 for the city to purchase a launch pass kiosk at Grantwood Park.
I'd like to make that motion, and I'd also like to commend Confor Plastics for this donation, which will allow people to, or voters to park on a daily basis out at Grantwood Park.
I'm gonna second it.
We have a motion and a second, uh, I'll need a roll call on this item.
Alderman Braun?
Aye.
Berby?
Aye.
Peckerro?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
And Zizelka?
Aye, motion is carried. We need a motion to bring a late communication to the floor?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Late communication is from the mayor, regarding the appointment, appointment of superintendent, superintendent of public works. Please be advised that I am appointing Mark Zellner, 437 Cole Street, North Tonawana, New York, 14120, as his super, superintendent of public works, effective April 2nd, 2018. Mr. Zellner's starting pay will be 96, 826, step three of the existing OPEIU salary schedule. I feel confident he is well qualified to do the job on behalf of the residents of the city of North Tonawana. Sincerely, Arthur Pappas, Mayor.
Make a motion that we accept that, uh, promotion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. That concludes the agenda, uh, we'll move on to anybody wishing to speak on any city business, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
John, you can do it right from there. That's all right, we can hear you.
Well, first of all, I wanna congratulate this honor of a body for placing the banners at the city market. I was racking my feeble brain where to put the banners, and, uh, I got lost, I didn't know where to put it, and lo and behold, they're at the city market, so I appreciate that very, very much. They look nice out there, even at night, you got the lights shining on it, absolutely.
I think it'll be a full point, good, good point, John.
So, uh, I thank you. I wanna congratulate, uh, I wanna congratulate, uh, Confor Plastics for the donation that they made, uh, for their, uh, launch pass kiosk at the Grantwick Park. I think that's a wonderful idea to have that out there, and, uh, I'm gonna congratulate, uh, I just walked in when you were, uh...
Turn the proclamation?
Proclamation on the volunteer fireman, just walked in on that, so I'm gonna congratulate the volunteer fireman here. I'm one, I've been one for sixty-some years in two companies, so, uh, I appreciate the proclamation that you made.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome, you're welcome. And, uh, you know, at first I thought, uh, my friend over here, uh, Sonia, was going to go along with the, uh, uh, guidance, and I think I mentioned the last time I was here that during World War II, we had victory gardens, uh, it's all developed right now, but it was, uh, between the high-speed line, Kane Avenue, uh, walk road, and, uh, the high school, it was, uh, I think it was a high school at that time, and each one was given a plot of, uh, land, about half the size of this room, and they provided water, and we had fresh vegetables, and as Sonia said, we had corn, uh, beans and potatoes. It was a wonderful idea, and I'm for it right now, I call the victory gardens, and, uh, I think we should have more instead of the one on, uh, 228 Summer Street, so...
John, yeah, John, just to say a few words there, we had a proposal on, uh, near the CSX property, that was their prime location, first choice, uh, that they were wanting to see if they could lease that, and it didn't, it fell through, but they were fortunate enough to have a second option with this 228 Summer Street, and, uh, I think they're gonna really got the right idea on going to the location where the need is most, you know, uh, as the church would refer to, those are God's people that really don't have access to shopping centers, that could actually go into the little pantry, could go to the gardens and get some of those vegetables that they could use and they could eat. So I think the access to it is important, uh, it's not where it looks prettiest, I think it's where the people need it the most, and that's where the people, uh, live, and, you know, I've gotta give credit to, uh, the Imagine Gardens for coming up with the $40,000 in funds themselves to, uh, make this happen. This wasn't a social services, or as people alluded to, some sort of, uh, attention where we're, we're allocating funding here to too many, to one spot, it's not the case. I think it's, it's allocated to where it's gonna do the best, the most good for the city. So thank you for saying that.
Very good, and I did thank you for the banner.
Yes, yes.
Very good.
I think it's gonna look nice, John. Kevin, you wanna come up to the microphone, state your name and address?
Kevin Hudson, 67, Justalad Drive, north. Four-year program, um, that I've asked for like four years, trimming around streetlights, at least in the Justalas. DPW is playing, so maybe that could-
We could have him, uh, implement that, come up with a plan.
It's, it's sort of difficult now because the leaves aren't out, but once the leaves come on, they obscure a lot of the streetlights in the Justalas. Secondly, uh, street repair list?
Fourth coming.
Fourth coming.
I was, uh, putting it together, I spoke to him, and, uh, we should be looking at, the most, what they came up with, what the aldermen came up with, marry those lists together, find out where we can do the best good with the money that we have, and not only that, but on top of that, the asphalt zipper will be in the places where they don't need to be completely repaved, um, we have gentlemen here from the DPW who work hard on this all, 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 all season, and I think that, uh, we're gonna come up with the best effective plan, and it's in the works right now.
I can only hope and ask that North Justala and West Justala are at the top of the list somewhere for this year.
I believe that that was put on last year-
It was.
And it's going to be a priority this year, and we'll make sure it is.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on any city business, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Kevin Kuzlawski, 985 Nash Road. First, I want to thank the mayor and the council for recognizing what the volunteer firefighters do for the city, it's a great honor to be able to accept this proclamation and, uh, in capacity as president of the association. Secondly, April also happens to fall into the Recruit New York with FASNY, which is the, uh, New York State Firefighters Association. We will be opening the halls up for recruitment on, uh, April 28th, which is a Saturday that is also Recruit New York Day. We'll be providing lawn signs here at City Hall for any resident who would like to put out a lawn sign, advertising that we're looking for volunteers. It'll also be on the, our Facebook page, anybody wishing one can contact us, and we'll drop one off at your house. Uh, we are in need of volunteer firefighters, uh, volunteer firefighters save the city a substantial amount of money by doing what we do and giving up our time, and we do need some new recruits, some of us are getting a little bit older. Recently, we've been lucky, we've had an influx of, uh, younger individuals coming in that are starting to feel, uh, giving back to the community is something they wanna do, and, uh, you know, we're, we're looking for more, we're looking for more help, people that are wanting to stay in the city and can offer those hours, and it doesn't have to be, you don't have to be on call 24/7, we understand you have a job, you go to your job, when you're off at your job, if you're available, come to the call, uh, you know, we do provide additional manpower in all the fires and accidents and natural disasters, we open up our halls as shelters, so please come out and volunteer.
We'll look to see what we can do, uh, for incentives to, to join that, to make it worthwhile, although I can't think of anything better than serving your community, whether it be in a volunteer effort or a career effort to try to help your neighbors, help your community, and keep it safe, so, uh, we'll do what we need to do, and I know we're all looking to get some lawn signs from you to promote your message.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Anybody else looking to step forward and state your name and address on any city business for the good of the city, please step forward.
Hello, Eric Herbert, 1049 Thomas Fox Drive East. Uh, it's, um, interesting to, uh, come up right after the gentleman who just spoke about the fire lawn signs, 'cause I have, uh, uh, general inquisitive questions, um, not accusatory in any way, uh, about a city ordinance issue, so I'm specifically hoping for a little clarification, um, specifically for ordinance 70, uh, dash one through four. Uh, recent days, citizens have announced their intent to run for school board, uh, I'm one of those citizens who's volunteered, uh, a few days ago, I was contacted by the Board of Education, uh, local Board of Education, North Tonawana Board of Education, uh, to inform me that they received a singular complaint, uh, that a lawn sign was up with my name on it, and, um, I've had a lot of requests for lawn signs for, to, you know, as the, uh, effort to run through the school board comes forward, I've had over 200 requests from residents, so I started handing them out very, uh, recently, over about a week ago. So today I was contacted by the magistrate and Zed, who said that they had also received the same complaint. Uh, the complaint said that there's an empty city ordinance, which limits political lawn signs from being posted more than four weeks prior to an election date, I'm obviously preaching a choir, reading, over here knows that, of course, um, but, one second, okay, so four weeks prior to your election date, and so that section, 70-dash-one, et cetera, the city ordinances addresses the political, uh, process of that, but in my opinion, it was not for the school board elections. So prior to putting the signs up, I asked prior and current school board members, who all told me that the city ordinance does not apply to non-political elections such as the school board election. So several members of the school board, past and present, have said that they put signs out five to six weeks prior, uh, in the past without any incident. So the school board election is obviously run by the, uh, New York State, uh, Board of Elections, not the County Board of Elections, et cetera, um, the school board is not endorsed political candidates, it's not, to my understanding, by any stretch of imagination, a political, nor should it be a political, uh, election process. So what I was hoping for today was that for the council, if you could consider clarifying that section of the city ordinance, um, so it's clear and fair to all residents and to anybody who might want to run president or any future, what exactly that, uh, city ordinance is in specifically meant for. Uh, and also I'd like to thank Ruth Brown, uh, who I've been able to contact over the last couple of days, and who's been very, uh, very good at getting back to me and very thorough at looking into the matter, so, thank you very much.
Um, so it is an interesting question, uh, Eric and I have talked about it the last couple of days, because the code, uh, specifically says political signs, um, so the question is, if it's a school board election, is it a political sign? Uh, it's, political sign isn't defined in our code, um, I have looked at the general, uh, definitions, it doesn't really give me any help, uh, so what I did today is I sent an email to the general counsel for the Department of State of New York, uh, 'cause they issue opinions, um, on such matters, um, and they have opinions that are on, in line, but I don't think they addressed the, the issue straight on, um, so usually they're pretty quick at getting back to me, usually it's been a day or two, uh, so I'm hoping to have that answer soon, um, 'cause honestly, it's a good question. Personally, I wouldn't think it's a political sign, because it's, it's run under the Board of Education, it's separate from, um, from the Board of Elections, uh, but I just wanna make sure before I give advice either way, but that's, that's where it stands currently with my office.
We'll, have you look into that some more, and of course, it is an election, so, you know, you can look into it, see if there's any clarification.
Right.
Traditionally, I know that this isn't the first, you know, school board election, uh, and most of those people were putting them out four weeks ahead, I know we had complaints, we polit, put political signs out too early, uh, but this would be an election, so we'd have to see if there's any other, uh-
And that's kind of the gray area, because if you look at the definition of election, it includes, part of it talks about polit, you know, uh, political being political, but not the whole definition, so it's kinda, it's kinda is a gray area, so, uh, I did request clarification on that from the, uh, General Counsel of the Department of State, and hopefully you'll probably hear that soon.
Thank you, Ruth, for that.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to hear your answer to that.
I know, I'll let everybody know.
Oh, thanks.
Anybody else wishing to speak on any city business, uh, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Gotta be faster, Mark.
I know I'm not gonna have enough time, but let me touch on this very quickly. First of all, was there an audio, uh, made of the planning commission yesterday- of all, was there an audio made of the planning commission yesterday?
I'm sorry, who was the question?
If there was, I would appreciate if the city would make it available on the website. And I'll tell you, it was going to be the regular meeting. There was one item. And then after that, the city's consultant planner was going to address, the agenda was going to be regarding the update of the zoning of downtown area and waterfront. And I was interested in it because I'm interested in planning and zoning. This is my community. I want to see it flourish and, you know, people come in. So, I'm interested in planning and zoning. At that update, when they, first of all, they didn't have their microphones on. I asked, would you please speak up and use your microphones? They didn't do anything for my request.
Well, the meeting was over at that point, Sonia.
I'm sorry?
They had adjourned the meeting because there was only one, there was only one agenda item on yesterday.
Yeah.
And then they adjourned the meeting. And then, and then they had, the presentation was just a general presentation. It wasn't part of the meeting. So, that's probably why their microphones were off. Because they all, they all moved down so they could see the screen. So, I mean, I wasn't even, I walked out after the...
I know. That's when I was coming in.
Because I, it was the same, it was the same presentation as at the workshop, so.
Well, the presentation was eighteen minutes ago. Whoa. But they weren't really, from the back and forth, they weren't prepared on addressing things. But here's the thing. Number one, the master plan we have, it was given to the common council in two oh eight. This is ten years later. I think, given the proposed draft of NT's comprehensive master plan in two oh eight, not yet adopted, before we made changes to our zoning ordinance, we revisit the master plan. And I'd like to say to you that there's quite a difference in how it was put together. This is Stuart Brown consultant in nineteen ninety. And this is Burtman's plan, two oh eight. I wish people would go to the library and read these two and read it and judge for yourself what do you think about each of them. And Stuart Brown, and I had the opportunity to sit on the, be part of the work, working committee on this. Mark, you were there as well. We met every week. And in Stuart Brown's, he says, "The purpose of the comprehensive plan of the city of North Tonawanda dated April nineteen seventy-one is an official stating of the community's planning policies for growth and development. The plan was formulated to provide a basis for city decision-making and a guide to orderly future growth and development throughout the community. The essential characteristics of the update are essentially the same as for the original plan development process."
You got about a minute and a half, Sonia.
"The comprehensive plan update must be comprehensive, general, long-range, comprehensive in that the plan encompasses all geographical parts of the community and all of its functional elements, such as roads, utilities, natural constraints which affect development and local population needs, general in that the plan summarizes its goals and policies so as to accomplish long-range needs without designating specific locations or detailed regulations. Long-range in that the plan looks beyond the forum of pressing current issues to address possibilities five, ten, or twenty years into the future. The timeframe envisioned for the plan update is the period nineteen ninety to twenty-ten." I think at the last meeting, I asked a few of the local officials, was that plan, this one, adopted? I thought it was adopted.
Thirty seconds.
It wasn't adopted. We need to go back, revisit. And if you notice, in this plan, they're saying this should go here, this should go there. A master plan has the people, the stakeholders, citizens, business people, all participating. Not that you, that the, that the consultant is gonna say, this is gonna go here, Tonawanda Island here, that over there. That's wrong. That's not the people's plan. That's the consultant and whoever in charge of City Hall. I can't express it enough. I would also say, take a look at Summer Street, one oh eight, Fortin Lumberjack College.
Thank you, Sonia.
Coming home, if I can just finish. When I was coming home, gigantic. It's understood that's not compatible. There's so much been written about that site. We had a fire there. That is inappropriate, what they are doing there. And next to it, one-ten, Summer Street, is an illegal, non-conforming use. This is things that this city has not addressed for decades. Stuart Brown mentions, have to look at these things and address them. I can't say enough how important this is. And thank you for letting me finish.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else wishing to speak on any city business?
Thank you for putting this out in the works.
For the good of the city, please step forward.
Hello, Mark Zellner, four seventy-three Cole Street. I'd just like to thank the mayor and the council for my appointment, superintendent. And we're putting the finishing touches on the paving list. We'll have it to you in the next couple of days.
All right. You so much, Mark.
Mark, congratulations.
Congratulations. Anybody else wishing to speak on any city issue, please step forward for the good of the city.
This is Anthony McThreeEightyFour, Robinson Street. Just speaking on the issue of the yard signs for the board of elections. As a candidate last year, my signs were up nine weeks before the election. I did not receive a single complaint. And it is my understanding that that election is governed not actually by the State Board of Elections, but by the State Education Commission. And it is not a political election because it is not any party affiliation. So, I hope that I clarify for some things just based off of what research that I had done last year.
So, we have to solidify, you say nine weeks? He says...
Well, no, I'm just saying mine went up nine weeks and that ordinance is a city ordinance.
There should be something that is concrete so that they all can take advantage at the same time, right?
I mean, if, you know, the state, I mean, the Supreme Court said that a city or township can't actually limit a political yard sign being up for a period of time anyway. During the last election cycle, there was a case in Niagara Falls about that.
I just want a uniformity discussion on when these people put the signs up legally and, or like, who put them back.
Well, I mean legally, I mean, if there's a limit that the city chooses to put on it, I think that's, that's on you guys. I'm just simply stating what I did last year as a resident and I did not receive a complaint under that ordinance last year. So, by the number of weeks that the city has set under that ordinance technically, if my signs were deemed political, then that would have violated that ordinance. But I didn't receive a single complaint about that. So, I, I mean, I don't think it's fair to take his down if mine were up for nine weeks last year or any other candidate signed down if they were up. Yeah, so, I'm just making...
You don't want extra exposure for some candidate, not the rest of them.
Well, I mean, if any candidate wanted to put their signs up now, I mean, that's, that's all on each individual candidate, in my opinion. So, that, I'm not here to support anyone in particular. I'm just saying, I did that last year. I think it would be fair for any of those candidates. They have a lot shorter of an election window than, you know, a city office does. So...
And just a note, if we could keep those signs off the city terrace, because there's no signs allowed on any of the city terraces. Just as, just as a note.
I will pass that message along to our office if they hear of any of them appearing there.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Anybody else wishing to speak on any city business for the good of the city? Anybody else? Seeing that there's none, we'll move on to closing comments, starting with Alderman Tyler.
Okay. Just to pick up about these signs, you know, I, I somewhat agree. I feel that the school board isn't necessarily a political race. You don't even have to be registered to vote, to vote in the school board. You'd be eighteen without a license, I think. So, and really, it's just if they wanna, you know, they wanna put their first foot forward, then go be it. All right, so be it. All right. The problem I do have with signs, and Eric, you brought this up, was I see a lot of businesses that have been putting sort of these scrap signs on public property or, you know, nailing them to posts and so on. I understand if someone lost their cat or dog and so on like that. But when people are just promoting their business, I, I don't think that's appropriate. And I think that's something we have to address. It's not really nice when you're coming into North Tonawanda and that's the first thing you see is a hand mark or a sign about going somewhere. So, something we should talk about. I want to again congratulate Mark. I did that ride along with you the other week. I had a really good time. You have a lot of great ideas for the city. I don't envy your job right now because you have a lot of work this summer, right? I'm sure you know, with, with roads. So, we're excited to see the, the list of roads and hopefully, community members are as well. And Comfort Plastics, Bob and I had the opportunity to go through Comfort Plastics. A lot of people don't know it. It's a business in North Tonawanda, right by the river. It's sort of tucked back a little bit. And they employ about two hundred and fifty people, which is a lot, right? And they're twenty-four seven, I remember, right? And, you know, the Comfort family's been around for years and years. A second generation, I believe, that owns it now. And it's, I, I think it's fantastic that they were able to donate ten thousand dollars to, to this addition where waterfront is a great amenity for people to access it easier. Magic Feet Gardens, Richards over here. Again, Sonia, I don't agree with you. I feel that it's an appropriate location. It's, it's high density. Incomes are relatively low, which is generally where you would put a community garden. It's a, it's an access point for people to have access to healthy foods. You know, a lot of families might not have cars, surprisingly. A diverse group of people might not drive. So, it's, it's just, if the market's too far, it's an easy place to grow their own produce and so on and, and bring community members together. And, and someone had brought up the point of volunteers. I see a lot of people in this audience, scouts back there. I think it's great. Hold on. And, you know, we need more young individuals getting involved in their city. It's, it's gonna really boost everything. I know I'm in like twenty committees at this point, so, you know, you can only stretch a penny so thin. And a lot, a lot of points were brought up tonight that I wanted to address. You know, we talked about political sign definition, attendance of committee members, compensation claims, public notices on available jobs, right? And, and so on. And I think it all goes back to this idea of the possibility of an ethics committee. And call it what you may, other communities have one. We talked about it briefly the, the last meeting or the one prior. I sent something into Dan, our clerk, and, you know, found out he's on vacation today. I didn't know that. So, I'd like it on the next agenda, which I was saying. And it's something I think we should continue to discuss. It's nothing that happens overnight and could be a great addition to the city for everyone. So, and thank everyone for coming.
Alderman Bob McArroy.
Good evening, everybody. I was gonna start, start on a light note, but I'll start on a heavy note. I think that an ethics committee is a way to put into people's minds that we are not doing what the voters have elected us to do. And I am against it. I, I firmly believe, in the thirty years I served in the Air Force, my one core value was integrity. And I will tell you that if I find out anyone that's violating their ethics and integrity, I will be the first one to bring it forward. We already have a committee that's an oversight for ethics. That is appropriate. We don't need one on a local level where then it becomes political. And I'm, I'm against it because I think you're trying to have the public's perception that there's something dishonest going on and that is absolutely not true.
How would you define political, Bob? What would make it political?
I just believe that you are trying to create, because of the climate that you refused to define the other day, the political climate is such that we need an ethics committee. When you tell me what the climate is, I will tell you what I mean by politics. Thank you. Now, on a lighter note, I found out who stole the queska. If you didn't go to Don Polsky's last night, you need to go there early on Zingus Day. But what a fabulous activity for us to highlight our ethnic heritage we have in North Tonawanda. And the mayor stole the queska. I found out. And you never know what you're gonna find out when you go to these things, but it was, it was such. So, Mayor, we got you. I'm, I'm making a public announcement that you stole the queska.
There's a wine inside.
They said they gotta bring it back.
You got to bring it back. As far as Grantwick Park is concerned, Bob Comper is just a great community servant and along with the Comfort Plastics. The scouts probably know that he is a big proponent for the Boy Scouts. When he heard I was a Boy Scout at one time, he said, "Give me the scout law." And I remembered the scout law. So, I was very happy that he, he challenged me on that. So, great community servant. I'm really excited that he has moved forward. And I really think that Russ Rizzo right now is smiling in heaven at what we're doing at Grantwick Park and the marina and with this kiosk. So, that's wonderful. The Community Gardens, I couldn't be more excited for us to move forward on this plan. And as again I said, Luke resurrected it from where it was at, at a, a complete stop. And we finally got it approved and moving forward. And I think this is gonna be a great thing for our community and for God's favored children.
Yes.
So, that's gonna be wonderful. We've just found out that Jesse Gucci is gonna do concerts on the river this year at Grantwick Park on Thursdays. He's gonna come to a work session and outline his plan for us. So, I'm excited that he is willing to pursue that and to move forward with that plan. And I'm very supportive of the events at Grantwick Park tonight. For the volunteers, Kevin, we really, really are excited about the volunteer firefighters. Your plan for them and the legacy of a hundred and twenty-five years of what those volunteer firefighters have meant to the city of North Tonawanda is just tremendous. So, we, we are, we are real excited about paying you and all the volunteers a tribute in that aspect. And finally, to Mark, well done, Mark. We're, we're excited to have you take over the Department of Public Works and expect only the greatest of things for you overall. So, with that, I'll conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Alderman Mark Barubi.
Okay, I'll keep this, I'll keep it short, just so we're not repeating the same things. But again, I commend Mark Zellner. I don't think there'd be a better qualified person to take over the responsibility. As far as Comfort Plastics and their donation, it's just going to be a great amenity again to Grantwick Park. And as Bob mentioned, Russ Rizzo, I'm sure, is gonna be smiling up, up there at that. And lastly, I'd like to appreciate all of the volunteer firemen and what they've done over these last hundred and twenty-five years. So, I'll keep it simple and short at that.
Thank you, Mark. Alderwoman Donna Braun.
All right. Everybody has everything to say before me. But I will keep it to congratulations and honor. Number one, I think the volunteer fire companies in our city, you said it was an honor to be here to take the proclamation, but it's our honor to give it to you for all the service that you do. I am a member of one of the firehouses and I'm behind the scenes. And there's a lot that goes into a volunteer fire company that, and takes a lot of people to keep it running. Community gardens, I'll go without my list. I also think it's a great addition to our Oliver Street corridor. We had a great Oliver Street assessment and that was part of a suggestion in that assessment was the community garden. So, I'm happy to see it get up off the ground and thank Luke for resurrecting it, as Mr. Pecker said. Last but not least, I would wholeheartedly congratulate Mark Zellner. This past year, I've worked very closely with him. I can pick up the phone and talk to him. What a great honor to you is to have you, some of your employees here to see you get that superintendent job. And it's well deserved, well deserved. And on that note, I thank the Boy Scouts for coming. And we're almost done. Thank you.
City Attorney Luke Brown.
I just want to thank Bob Fricki.
I just want to thank Bob Fritchie for volunteering for the planning commission. I spoke to him yesterday after the meeting. He's a project manager at RFP Oak Hill. He worked on the Remington project, and he's currently working on the Hammerstein project in Niagara Falls. So I think he's going to bring a lot to the table for the planning commission. And I just want to thank him for taking some time out to, to join that commission and come and put in the work on that.
Thank you, Luke. We won't forget Lori Schwartz, Assistant Clerk. Any closing comments on you? No updates or anything? Okay. I want to make sure I got everybody. Mayor Arthur Pappas.
Well, so much has been said already, and I don't want to repeat everything. I do want to thank the council for approving the appointments that I was, that I gave to them. And I'm very, very proud of these people that have come forth as volunteers, such as Mr. Fritchie and Mr. Di Bernardo, who have not been involved before in any government position that I'm aware of. They bring a lot to the table, and I think we're fortunate to have them volunteer. And with the volunteers in general, tonight, as we were honoring the, the firemen, and the last time we, we honored the, the auxiliary police, it's getting harder and harder to recruit, as we've talked about. And this is true with so many organizations because, well, life is different today. People are very, very busy. They have so many commitments and, and their jobs and families, of course, have to take priority. And the training required for volunteer firemen today is so much different, so much more intense than it was several years ago. At one time, you could probably almost call it a social organization. They did their job, of course, and they, they helped with fighting fires and emergencies, but today it's so much more intense with the state requirements now. They have to go through some tough training, and it takes real commitment. And therefore, it is harder to recruit. But maybe in the long run, the recruits we get might be just so qualified that we'll be proud to have them. And 125 years, you know, some organizations don't last 25 weeks. Some don't last 25 months or 25 years, but 125 years with our fire departments is really something to be proud of in, in our community. Comfort Plastics, of course, we're, we're very thankful for their participation financially and in planning, too. They're helping the planning with this. And this isn't the first time that they have donated financially for projects in the city, so we're, we're very happy with that. I also want to mention that I am very happy tonight to say that with the Public Works Department, we have a new leader and someone that has been with the department for, what, 27, 28 years? 29 years. So, and this person, Mark, of course, has just about handled every job there has been with the Public Works Department. And he knows the department inside and out. He knows the community. And the people involved that have worked with him, his, his team, and now to be under him, so to speak, are going to be very, very proud. I know they're very happy tonight. And to say something about this department, this past couple of years has been absolutely exceptional with the work they have done. This department has grown, and this department is doing work quickly, and they are surpassing some of our surrounding communities. And not to knock anyone else or any other community, but things are being done rapidly. And the past year especially, and I, I repeated this at many meetings, the weather has been the most uncooperative that it's been in a long time. And these men and women in that department, along with our other departments, your police and fire, but with the DPW, they're out in every temperature imaginable, from the extreme heat where you can't breathe, to the bitter, bitter cold where you're, you're freezing out there. And they're down there, out there, whether it's picking up the trash or whether it's working with the water department, digging ditches, or they're taking down these, these old trees that are falling down if they don't get taken care of. Branches are falling, and these men and women are out there in every kind of weather. And sometimes we take it for granted. They have done an absolutely spectacular job. So congratulations to all of them and Mark to you for what you're about to undertake. And my last comment, I think it's great tonight that we had some people discuss, and Mr. Herbert, Eric Herbert, I think it was here to be acknowledged for coming forth and asking for a clarification. Because I think a clarification is needed on the issue, because if a question came up once or twice in my office, it's going to come up more. So I, I think it was very good for you to bring that out, and I have to say, I have to give you credit for doing that and, and asking the right way to proceed. So thank you for doing that. And thank you for all of you for attending tonight.
Lastly, let's finish with a few comments here. You know, thank you for everybody who does come forward, who approaches the microphone and states your, your concerns. We take them seriously, and we hear what they, what they, what you have to say. And if we don't have an answer tonight, we'll get an answer. And one of the things I want to say amongst the things that we voted on, the things that have been discussed tonight, is that, you know, we're, everything you're hearing tonight has a lot to do with the direction the city's going in. And I'll tell you, starting even with just naming the volunteers for the fire department. They work alongside the career firefighters. Many of you may or may not know that. And they, they, you know, they're, they're dwindling with their volunteers, you know, and honestly, I would think, you know, I'm raised from an area where volunteering is to make you feel good for doing the best you can in your community without all the incentives and accolades and just being able to feel good for what you're able to do. Whether it's a cleanup project, whether it's saving lives, whether it's putting out a fire on metal drive, these are the guys that are there, just like the police, they're putting themselves in harm's way, in some cases, a daily, on a daily basis. So, you know, we're going to do what we can do for those folks to, you know, kind of entice some of the people that may not know what this group does or doesn't do, or to see the advantages of serving the community in that capacity or, or the auxiliary police capacity, for that matter. But either way, it's public safety, boils down to public safety. Those are our visual, most visual departments, the police and honestly, the DPW. You look out your window, you don't have to go anywhere, and you see, you may see a policeman on patrol, you may see the police across the street, you may see an ambulance taking care of your neighbor. But I'll tell you what, the DPW is out there in some way, shape, or form in one of your neighborhoods, and they're plowing, they're taking care of the leaves. I've seen Mark from this, from the last few years of working with him, he's actually adapting and improving our equipment to better suit leaf removal, snow removal. These are things outside of the box that show me that this is a great choice that the mayor's made and that he's held up a standard here that his men respect and that the morale of this department has gone, in the eight years I've been on this council, has gone way, way up. And I think it's a lot to do with that work ethic. And he instills it on the guys that are sitting here tonight, and they've stepped it up. So with the cooperation of those things, I feel good about my city, not only as a taxpayer, as a resident, and as a council member. So I just want to say that this was no arbitrary selection. This gentleman has shown me, and I've seen it, where he's thinking outside of the box on what we can do better. And I want to applaud him for that, on top of congratulating him for his appointment. Mayor, it was a very good appointment that you made there. And I look for that department to, to impress this year, with everybody working on it, not just Mark, but all the guys that trim your trees, all the guys that do your sidewalks. I'm telling you, we can't give them enough credit because they're just as much a part of this community as anybody else. As far as the community gardens go, I know Rich, you're here, and, and you're humbled for not speaking tonight, but I'll tell you what, I've heard everything you can say about, from between you and Bob Zima, we almost kind of had a stall on this whole project, which would have been extremely unfortunate. I'm glad that Luke and myself and talking to Bob and this council was able to get this back on track so that you can meet your timelines and get this done as soon as possible. And we will continue to cooperate, and we, we can't wait to see what the finished product's going to be. And the effects it'll have on the people that will need to take advantage because of their situation and their needs. And as Pastor Chad would tell you, these are God's people. They moved their church towards where God's people were, where the need was. And that's why I think this is a good location. Most people don't know that. Other than that, I just want to say thanks again, and, you know, I want everyone to have a good, good evening. And I'd like to also ask for a motion to, to adjourn. So move.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I want to thank all of you, sir. I'll point you, Mark, up for the next, he's working.
It's so nice to see you guys. Right, it's so nice to see you guys.
Good for all of us. And that helps everybody.